More than ready, yes. Thank you.
We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for Monday, April the 1st, 2024. If everybody please stand for pledge of allegiance and a moment of solace right after. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of solace, please. I would like to remember our mayor, John Miller, has put to rest this past Saturday. Thank you. You all may be seated. There'll be one change to the agenda, and that's under Section A, Item 2. TDA quarter report will be moved to mid-month. With that being said, I need approval of the agenda with that change.
Motion to approve the agenda with the deletion of the TDA report.
Motion in a second. Any questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five oh. Next is the public comments section. If there's anyone who has anything they'd like to say, they have three minutes or five minutes, whichever. Now's your time. There are none and seen none. I'll go ahead and close the public comments section. We'll move right along to Section A, presentation to the boards. It's Allegheny County CTP survey, and we may need a few minutes to adjust for some computer work. So if everybody just hold tight for a few minutes, Daniel will let us know when we're
Mr. Chairman, he's going to go from right here. He's going to talk and navigate from here.
That works for everyone?
Ready then? Go ahead and proceed.
Good evening, everyone. Ruben Crumey and Gerald Carr with NCDOT's Transportation Planning Division, and we're here today to actually present to you the survey, or at least how to navigate through the survey, and the survey that's going to be presented possibly by May. It's supposed to be an advertisement in the month of April. So two weeks for the advertisement. It'll be sent through High Country RPO, through David Graham. And, let's see, we just want you to be able to look at it, know how to navigate through it, and there's some things that Gerald will explain to you to help you get a better understanding. And this is part of the Allegheny County Conference of Transportation Plan. And as you're aware, I guess, we're at the second phase of the CTP process, and with this is part of the vision statement and the goals and everything that's related to that. With this survey, this survey will help us in moving forward with the CTP, and it includes the input from the locals, from Sparta and from Allegheny County. So it will help us understand what things they see here in the county, deficiencies, what they like, what they'd like to see in the future, those kind of things. So it will help us to, with the vision for Allegheny County and Sparta. So Gerald's going to take it away.
Okay, so as Ruben mentioned, this survey that will go hand in hand with our CTP process. So it is a representation of your county, but more so those who actually take the survey. So it is very encouraged that you all mention it to as many people as you can, get the word out so that, you know, we can have a good representation of how people are feeling about the county. And we also have a QR code that will go hand in hand with the paper copies. So if anyone with a smartphone would like to take the opportunity to scan it, you know, and follow along, or get a feel for it if you haven't had the opportunity to yet. And that goes for the public as well. So I'll give you all about a minute or two if you want to scan and follow along. The first version that I'll present to you all is the web-based version. So it'll be a link sent out to everyone, and they'll have the opportunity to click it, and these slides, these pages will open up. The survey is broken up into five pages, but kind of two sections. The first being the first page, the introduction, and the second being the wrap-up, which are pretty much just informational introductions to what the CTP process is, who our partners are, NCDOT, the High Country Planning Organization, you all. It will also hold the vision that we came up with as a collective last steering committee meeting, and also, you know, the county seal. And it's interactive, as I was saying. Each page has an about icon, which will tell the user a little bit about the page that they're on and how to navigate said page. And they will click the double arrows to go next, or the green highlighted next. And also, once the survey is translated in Spanish, there'll be an icon appear that'll allow the user to click that, and it'll translate the entire survey into Spanish.
I'm like Espanol.
And the second slide is the priority ranking slide. These three slides kind of get into the interactive part of the survey, where we collect information in the pens and comments of the public. And this slide, it asks them to rank the transportation trends and issues. So it gives them eight trends and/or issues, and they will drag these, each one of them, above this line, and as you can see, it numbers them. So they have the freedom to shift and reorder how they feel. And also, a picture should come up here. I don't think I'm connected to the internet. Sorry. And there are several pictures and descriptions of each transportation trend and issue. And a small, of course, description. There's also a comment cloud that will feature on each page, where they can click, and they can leave a general comment on that page as a whole. So following that, there's the multimodal rating page, which poses the question, what do you think? So there are several statements under each category. There's general statements, and then there's four categories for each mode of transportation, the roadway, the pedestrian, the bicycle, public transportation, of course. And at the beginning, it features a small write-up paragraph about each category, and then it goes into about four statements. One for the general statements being such as road condition, safety, traffic, ease of travel, and the user will rank each statement from one to five stars, one being disagree, or five being strongly agree, something similar to that. And they will simply just rate each star, and each statement also features the comment bubble, so they can comment on each statement, add any additional information and/or questions to the category. And like I said, some of the, we'll go into it a little bit more detail once I pull up the mobile version and walk you all through that as well. And for the fifth page, it's an interactive map. It's a Google-based map, where the user can zoom in as closely as they need to, so that they can see what they're looking at. It also features different types of layout, so it can, it'll buffer a while, once I connect to the Wi-Fi. If I can. It will show you all that. It will change it from the regular transportation view, location view, to the satellite view, so it'll give, you know, a better view. And then, once they zoom in as close as they can, or wherever, they'll use these drop-down markers, and each one features a comment. It features a description, such as like roadway, it will say home, work, school, public transportation, what's the problem in that area, and what category it will relate to, ask some similar questions like, how often do they run into this problem or in this area? Same for public transportation, bike and pedestrians, safety, and other issues. So just another opportunity for them to leave any general comment they may have on the survey. And finally, we come to the wrap-up, as mentioned. Just a short few questions, asking them who they are, where they come from, where they work, whether they work inside or out of the county, and ethnicity, age, and just a few demographics, so we can get an idea of who they are and what they like to do in the county or where they work. And that's just, that's for the web-based platform. As you can see, the mobile platform is similar, it's just it's vertically based, so they will
Well, while that's going on, the QR code is fairly new. We just start, in fact, Gerald is the first one to actually utilize the QR code for the survey. So it really helps us to be able to collect the data a lot easier. We also have a paper copy. So for, it'll be distributed in certain locations, depending on where, I guess, through David. David Graham is going to get the best locations for people to actually take the survey. And then, for the paper survey, we have to actually manually data entry that into the survey to get all the results. But for the QR code, and most people have a phone, they'll be able to actually do it from their phone, and it'll be easier for us to get the results, so.
Do you have a website besides the QR?
There is a link. The link will be sent out. I think that there'll be different organizations that will help distribute, whether it's through email, I think the, is it ACTV, Allegheny County TV, they will assist. And it'll be distributed out throughout the county, and I think it'll be a great thing. And you'll get to hear, I guess, the input from all the locals. Most of the locals that take the CTP. And the thing about it is, the input that's being put into the survey is not necessarily the representation of how everyone in Sparta feels. It'll be just the ones who've taken the survey. So we don't want it to get it misunderstood, but it's just for you all to get an understanding of what some of the locals are saying and some of the issues that are going on within Sparta and Allegheny County.
Give me, we'll hear it. But, you know, some of the older generation, the older population, they won't use the online or the QR code, so they would need to do the paper.
And you have a large percentage of older. We welcome that, so just, we would just manually put their input in if we can put the manual.
While he gets that, I'll just go quickly show you how easy it is to navigate the map again. This, as I mentioned, they can zoom in as far as they want to, get a pretty clear view because it's Google-based, and like I mentioned, some of the dropdowns will come down. They'll just simply, it's fairly interactive, and we try to make it as easy as possible. So this is pretty much, they just select the category, select the issue, and submit.
Freefield mine.
And it works, it works the same way on the phones as well.
Let me have one.
Get some copies made.
Okay, thank you, thank you. No. And the paper copy is identical to the online version. The map, in regards to the map, they will just write down the address or location, and write down the issue that they see. And if you all have anything, any questions or comments, I'm open to taking them now, and I can walk you all through the mobile platform as well.
I just took it myself just a few minutes ago on my phone. I mean, it was easy.
Fairly easy?
Yeah, it was easy.
Like I said, it really is the middle three slides that collect the most of the information. So the first two were just general overview, and the last one, just working information on you as well.
We can expect the real one, the real survey, in sometime in May?
In May, that's our plan. We'll meet with the steering committee next week, hopefully it should be, well, it is complete now. Our purpose here is to kind of get you all to maybe motion and approve it for our release, and tomorrow we'll present to Sparta as well.
I'll leave before you all, if you have any more questions or comments.
Do you start, do you have to finish it all at the same time, or can you come back in?
Not sure about that one. I would think that you would want to finish it, and I don't think it'll stay open, but we're not sure.
Stay, okay.
Not sure.
Once you hit submit on the final page.
Here's Bobby's chance to complain about the.
He's already done that a couple times in the maintenance.
The whole community.
We remember.
It's on the list.
As Ruben mentioned, we'll be working on getting it converted to Spanish, and then there'll be two weeks for us to advertise it, and then 30 days of, you know, for the month of April. For the month of May. Thanks to Gerald.
How long is this going to last, once you open it?
Okay, so it's actually, there's a 30-day period that, that's the standard for a public involvement process. And before we do the 30-day period, there is a two-week advertisement that will be put out, which is in Gerald's presentation. And once the advertisement is put out for two weeks, because that's required, then once that has been set, then they will announce the dates, the beginning and the end of the survey.
And I'll go in, I'll step the release in automatically.
And when the, like, for instance, when it's being converted to Spanish, and they click on it, there'll be a Spanish flyer as well. So all those things will be set.
I've got a question about talking about the safety issues that you had up a minute ago. How do you express your opinion about guardrails in the county? And where would you express yourself about secondary roads in the county?
Well, in regards to the map, you would just drop down like it's another comment, and you would just manually write in what that issue would be. But I can also, for safety, I can add a dropdown and include guardrail as an improvement, like road widening, I have it right here, maintenance repair, that's something that guardrail would go under as a maintenance repair.
I just look at our winter time up here, even if it's not snowing, we have a lot of ice. But our school buses travel a lot of very dangerous roads with no guardrails. I mean, some of these roads, if you go off, it's several hundred feet before something stops you. And just briefly looking through here, I didn't see, you know, something along that line. And then the secondary roads are gravel roads. We have quite a few miles of gravel roads.
Well, just like Gerald was saying, in the map, where you take the icon and you put it on the map, like the location, where there's an issue with, like, the school buses, the icing of the roads, that's a good opportunity in the survey to point where those things are taking place, so that when we get the survey, we can actually see the locations of those issues, like the slopes and the roadway, because you can zoom in and out. So we will know where those locations are, and you can put the comment up there, the little air bubble there. So that helps a whole lot. And then that other section, multimodal rating, I know you mentioned about, like, where it says roadway, even if it doesn't say primary, the bubble there, the comment for roadway, you can still put that there, roadway improvements, and type in the comment of secondary roads or gravel roads. I think that's what you were saying. You said gravel.
If you want to upgrade it to modern standards or something like that. I can read through a few of them if you all would like. Would you like?
Me too, okay. Go ahead.
So in regards to roadway, we have roadway improvements are needed, even if they have unavoidable impacts. So, you know, there's a fair going on, and you might need to shut down the road for a while, or is that something that people will be able to live with, you know, for temporary improvements to the road, where your daily life, you know, is subject to, be subject to change? Is that something they would agree with? Things like traffic, am I willing to live during the busiest peak hours during high tourism months? And road widening, am I in favor of widening or to meet, in favor of riding the roads in Allegheny to meet traffic demands? So, you know, widen roads rather than adding lanes, you know? When it comes to pedestrian, would you improve sidewalks, multi-use paths to be able to access more of the county? Would you, you know, like, it was mentioned, maybe adding a multi-use path from here to the fairgrounds, you know, during those peak months, and you have a lot of things going on, such as this upcoming season. Usage, I would more likely to walk if sidewalks and multi-use paths are greenways, connected schools, shopping centers, neighborhood communities, public transportation stops. I know you all have on-call bus stops, so I mean, that may not matter to some people because you don't have a stop-and-go bus, but, you know, that's something to consider in the future. Bike lanes, bike lanes or paved shoulders should be included on roads where feasible, on and off-road, preference for said bikers. Usage, similar to the pedestrian question, if there were more bike lanes and bike routes available, would people use them more? So some of the questions kind of line up with usage, funding, and just pretty much that's the categories, you know? Would you rather pay for it, or is there another method around it, you know? System expansion, such as public transit, bus stops and routes, we spoke with them last meeting, you know, you all have been working on expanding the on-call bus services that you all have, so.
And up there, we discussed this at the steering committee, where it says, private transit includes ride-sharing services such as Uber, Lyft, and taxis. So they were saying that they had one Uber driver at one time, so we thought that was pretty cool. So you never know, the population increase, more Uber, more Lyft. But, you know, that's for the vision, and really, like we were saying, whatever those things that they would like to have, or they'd like to see in their vision, and being able to locate it on that map, that will help a whole lot. So it's almost like they're working together, so that we can kind of see it from a three-dimensional point of view of what they're looking at, looking for in Sparta and Allegheny.
And just our contact information, if you all have any questions going forward, we're looking to have the survey approved and completed and worked on. finalized by Friday, so a few days, if any extra comments or assignments or questions or even photos that you may want to include in instead. I'm open to making it as personal to you all as possible. If anything, any photo or comment, feel free to send us an email, text, call. That's all from me.
Yeah, I think the photos are showing up now, now that he's online.
And as you said, you got the opportunity to see him while you were scrolling through the web-based app. Thank you all.
Thank you.
A question. When you get the survey completed, when will we be privileged of what it says, what you're, how it turns out?
Oh, you mean the results after everyone in Allegheny County has taken the survey? Probably in June, we're not sure, but once it's been completed, we'll tally up, we'll put it in some charts, and we're going to go over all the results, and then the results will be presented to the steering committee, but we will make it available, where people can see all the results from the survey.
From the steering committee, where does it go next on your end?
After the steering committee, with the results, and I'm not sure how High Country, the RPO, is going to distribute that or put that out, but I'm not sure how they're going to make it available. It could be, we will put it on our website, NCDOT Planning, that has the actual CTP for Allegheny County. There's a link, and we'll make it available for the public to see that.
Any other questions or comments, John, Michelle, Greg, Timmy, Mr. Carter?
And if you don't have anything now, feel free to submit it, send it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir, Chairman, and counsel, and Mike.
Got all your stuff, Gerald?
Yeah.
Okay. Next is Item 3, courthouse design bids and construction, Martha Carter, pages 2 through 3.
Chairman, members of the board, in your package, you have a, basically a draft schedule of the courthouse renovation, design, and bid schedule. And I'm sure you've had the opportunity to look through it. The two most important dates coming up is on Wednesday at 4:10 2024, we have a pre-bid meeting at the courthouse, and then on Tuesday, 4:30 2024, we actually have the bid opening for the project here in the boardroom. So we will have, by the end of April, we will have, we'll have all the advertising, we'll go through the proper procedures, we'll have the bid opening, we'll have a recommendation for the contractor. And as you look through the following few days in May, we will bring those recommendations to the board sometime in the early part of May, hopefully gain a notice to proceed. And then, if all goes well, somewhere around May the 20th, construction will begin. And then if you take and flip to your next page, which is basically a chart of when certain things related to the courthouse will take place. things related to the courthouse will take place, you can follow that across, but everything should be in place, everything should be renovated and brought up to standards, basically by the end of October. So, I think that's an important date moving forward as well. But it looks like that following this schedule with no anticipated delays, that courthouse should be complete by the end of October. So, you're looking May through October as your construction period. There will be times during that construction period when the exterior of the courthouse is being worked on with window replacements and other type upgrades, so the area will be fenced off, and we've talked a little bit about that during our budget sessions. Not quite sure how that's going to impact some of the, maybe the events that are being planned in that area, but fortunately, this courthouse is going to take priority over those events. So, we waited long enough, we're ready to go, and as, as the project continues, I'll keep you updated, but right now, looks like in October, we're going to be set.
Questions, John?
No.
Michelle?
Greg?
Timmy?
No.
Thank you for the report. Moving, that completes Section A, moves Section B. General business, there's three items, and these are for action. And the first one is the Allegheny County Sick Lead Policy, page four, Mr. Carter?
Page four, second paragraph from the bottom, we discussed at a previous meeting, the paragraph that identifies the, what the current policy was, that it related to sick time dedicated to an immediate family member. And as we discussed this, the thought from the board was to basically draw a line through, what you see is not to exceed six days per calendar year, that was the original language, and we added in place of that with proper documentation provided to the department head and human resource in a timely manner. So, this reconstruction of this sentence eliminates that six-day per year, it allows for a mechanism for employees to tend to their immediate family without fear of exceeding that, that six-day minimum, and each employee that has spoke up or spoke to has been in favor of this for some time. So, it is before you with, with that recommendation for consideration tonight.
Any questions, John?
No questions, we'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Any questions? Got a motion in a second. Any, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries five oh, thank you. Moving right along to item number two, rules of procedure, Michael, that's you, page five through fourteen.
The only page that you really need to focus on is page ten. If you remember, we went through, we've actually gone through this document several times in the past, but at the last meeting, I actually brought up the public comments section, which is highlighted in yellow on the screen, and after discussion, we, we came up with this language, which is, first bullet point under public comments is a fifteen minutes allotted in total unless the rules of procedure are waived by a majority vote of the board. And that was the language that we discussed, it has now been incorporated into it. The remaining document has all the previous changes to it. I believe this is the last change to consider for this document, so that is before you for consideration.
Questions, John, Michelle, Greg?
Yeah, I think we need to wait till after the election and see who's going to be here and who's not, and vote on it then.
Anything else? Me? We need a motion in a second.
Send a motion. Yes, I'll make a motion to that.
Motion to what?
To wait till after the election and vote on this.
In no second?
Well, just a comment, whatever the, after the election, there will be in December an opportunity where the new board can revisit this. If we change it right now, it'd be until it's changed again, which could possibly be in December.
There's been a motion on the floors, there a second. Hearing none, hearing none, hearing none, motion dies. Need a motion to accept the proposal as presented.
Make a motion to accept as presented.
Thank you.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed likewise? Motion carries four to one. Item number three, code of ethics, Michael, that's you, page fifteen through twenty.
Just a second to flip the papers. So, this is another document that we have wrestled around with for some time. The, I had sent out an email to each board member asking for thoughts, and I received three responses back. One was in favor of the, one that involved citizen input. The other two were more along the option two, which required a couple of changes in the words. Those changes occur on page sixteen, in the paragraph just above the section two, which is on your screen, what those recommendations were, where the last sentence was failure to attend the required two hours of training, and this is for the code of ethics. The recommendation was to strike through May and add the word will, result in the removal from any slash all committee assignments. That is the first portion. And then the next one is on page twenty, which is the end of the document. The last paragraph says the accused member, and I believe it is up on the board, shall remain removed from all appointed committees and boards, and here is the recommended change in language in yellow, for a minimum of six months or the next organizational meeting of the commissioners occurring in the following December, as determined by the Board of Commissioners. So, those are the only two. I got a majority response of two in favor of one option, one in favor of option one. I did not receive comments from a few, so option two was what I have put into play for your consideration tonight.
Discussion, John?
Well, I have a number of points that frankly, I'm uncomfortable with. One of the things that we do, all we do is censure. There's no provision in here for removal. A removal censure. Remember, the one, the one thing that I keep on referring to is in New Hanover County. In Hanover County, they removed a committee member because he had received a DUI. He was reinstated because they did not have any procedure. So, I, are we going to put this in here? And the punishment, to be quite frank, is more like a vacation. You don't have to go to the committee meetings, that means I, for example, right now, I don't have to go to Boone two times a month. I don't have to worry about being in the meeting on Thursday. It's debatable whether that is really a punishment. And the other point that I'd like to point out is enforcement. Guidelines for public comments, last meeting, please direct all comments to the Board of Commissioners. One commissioner was called out. Please be subtle in all comments, yet we have a speaker that is just about at the top of his lungs. Nothing said. That's our guidelines for public comments. If we're not going to enforce them, why have them?
Anything else?
That's it.
Michelle? Greg?
I'll make a motion to put it off there from November of election, this coming November.
Any comments?
John makes good points about it, and it's, it's something we've battled back and forth. He's right, you know, if you do the censure, it is a vacation sort of. I just don't know that we have a perfect fix, you know, but we do need, we need a system in place where if things happen, we have this to go by, you know, as far as like whether, how we, you know, check in to see where, if the commissioner actually, you know, did cross one of these lines, and then this is what they expect. So, right now, up until now, we do not have anything. So, and like John also said, if, you know, if the next board doesn't like these, and then they want to tweak them at the, in December, that's fine too. I mean, that's majority rules about it anyway, but that being said, I'm going to make a motion, well, we got to lay it on his.
I have a motion, and I will second the motion.
Pardon me?
I'll second the motion.
Got to let Greg's go first, John.
Excuse me. I withdraw.
John, your motion was to delay?
No.
No, I was seconding Greg Walker's motion.
We have to clean up with what Greg had a motion on the floor first. It needs a second to proceed.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Greg's motion to put this off to December, or to the next election, please raise your hand. All those opposed to that motion, please raise their hand. That motion dies for a vote of three to two. Now, we need a motion for approval of the, of the rules, of the code of ethics that's been presented.
I make a motion that, that we approve the, the rule change or the additives that we have moving forward.
Need a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, motion carries three to two. Thank you. That concludes Section B. We move right along to county managers' comments, ordinance codification.
Chairman, members of the board, I've got a couple. The first one is, as identified on your agenda, the ordinance codification. Few meetings back, we talked about a plan to have all the county ordinances codified, put into a proper stance to ensure that they, you know, some of them, as we identified, are thirty, forty years old, some of the statutes may not exist that, that once did. So, I spoke with a group that worked with in the past, Munich Code, which is now called Civic Plus, and they have sent, and I will, I will, this is just information, I will present you formally with their request at the next meeting, but to codify, to bring everything up to, to standard, which includes most likely eliminating several of those ordinances, because they probably do not meet the current standards, I guess that's a good way to put it. Nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and they've got a couple of add-ons, if we want them, we can have it posted on their website to where it's worldwide, and anybody can see it anywhere and make comparisons, but those are just add-ons. But right now, it's just shy of ten thousand dollars to do our ordinances, to have all that done. And just to put that in perspective, I had a conversation with Travis Dalton, because he has spoke with another group about doing our land use plan and codifying seven to eight ordinances, which are included in this bunch as well. And the price that he got for doing that work was twenty-five thousand. So, I'm just laying this out today, I'll, I'll give you the full quote, so that you'll have it for your next meeting. You can consider it, you can, you cannot, but I know there's been a lot of talk about getting these ordinances in line, and to me, this is one way that you do that, and not tie up everyone's time in doing it. I know it's a third party, I know what goes along with that, but, and Heather can attest, there's a lot of work involved in this kind of thing. So, that'll come to you next, next meeting. My next comment is just a, a thank you to all the county employees that helped out at the recent fundraiser for the Rector family. We had a great turnout. Miranda Roop provided some information earlier to me today, and then April provided a little more, but with everything that went on, somewhere between twenty-six and twenty-nine thousand dollars was raised for that fundraiser. So, I just want to thank everyone who participated, who donated, who, who come out, you know, was engaged in it, we certainly appreciate all that. We had an RFQ out for the transfer facility, and for whatever the reason, no one submitted a response, so I made a few phone calls today, and we'll likely get some information on that shortly. From a budget meeting standpoint, we've made it through a large part of the department budgets and some of the special appropriations. Right now, I think Commissioner John had mentioned at a previous meeting, we've got about a, somewhere around a two and a half million dollar difference in the requested expenditures versus our anticipated revenues. So, once we complete going through the remaining groups, we'll begin to start looking into how to creatively come up with ways to either reduce or increase some of that. At your April fifteenth meeting, if you remember in the past, any, any department- At your April fifteenth meeting, if you remember in the past, any, any department that has a rate or a fee structure involved in their department, I've asked them to come and make a presentation to the board identifying what their proposed rate for the upcoming year is, whether it's the same or whether it's an increase. So I've sent an email out for them to be at your next meeting, April fifteenth, to provide that. That will give you time to digest it, to understand it. The information will be in your package so you can take home and look at it as well. If all goes well, your first meeting in May will probably ask the board to set a public hearing date for the budget, which coincides with what we've done the last four years. And sometime you all will make a decision for the date and time of that in May, and hopefully with an adoption sometime early June of the upcoming budget. And the last thing that I have is, the next meeting will be April fifteenth, and unfortunately, I will not be at that meeting, so make sure everything's in order and leave it in good hands. That's all I have.
Michelle, I'll let you go first.
I attended the fundraiser last Friday night, and I just wanna give a big pat on the back to the county and all the employees, the crew. It was, it was really something else. I mean, that, that place was packed out, and people were giving, and it just really showed the heart of what Allegheny County is. And I think that one pie was sold by, was sold for over three thousand dollars for a pie. Then they gave the pie back and cut it up into slices and sold it again for a hundred and fifty dollars a piece. So, I mean, it, it just shows the heart of this county and, and how they, you know, they're willing to help, help those out who are in need. And, you know, twenty-nine thousand or whatever it was, sounds like a, a lot of money, but I'm telling you, I had a child that was in Brenner's, and it doesn't take long for those bills to really add up. So there's another fundraiser, I believe this Friday night, at Glade Creek School, another bingo, to help this family out. So not only do they have one child with a, a life-threatening illness, but they have two children, so, and both of them are employees of the county, so. But anyway, Allegheny County, my hat is off to you. That was a great event, and my hat is off to the, to the employees of this county. It's good to see everybody come together and work together. Also, we have the apple pie festival coming up the first Saturday of May, gonna be a big event. Please try to come out and support it. We've stopped taking vendor requests, I think we've completely filled up our, our vendor allotment, and there's gonna be plenty of apple pies this year. So I wanna thank the fire departments for stepping up, and they're gonna be handling traffic control and parking, so, along with the highway patrol, so. Make sure that we can get everybody in and out, and there's gonna be a shuttle, so. It goes smoother this year. That's it from.
Thank you. Emmy?
Yes, I just wanted to add to what Michelle and Michael said. I think Allegheny County, all the support for the Rector family, I think it's a very appropriate weekend for people to sacrifice their time and resources to help the Rector family for this good cause, and I just hope too, while everybody was spending their Easter weekend, that everybody remembered what Easter is about. But also, I wanted to say thank you for, I know that the staff around the, here at the county has put forth tons of time, effort, help, and this is what we do as Allegheny County, it's what, it's this, we see this, we've seen it from time to time, and it's, it just really makes us feel good to be an Allegheny County resident, to see the people step up and, you know, want to give, but, I'm in resource.
Thank you. Greg, comments?
I know Daryl and his wife's not home much, but I stopped at, I seen him about a month ago, but, you know, just moral support to him means a whole lot.
Thank you. John?
I have a number of items I'd like to cover. I'm glad that the fundraiser was a success, but that is a drop in the bucket. Having had a special child, this is a never-ending process. You hate it, but Allegheny County has always been a very giving county. It is surprising how much people will dig down and do it. Unfortunately, I wasn't aware of the fundraiser, so I never attended, and I'm sorry. Getting back on a couple of other things. Where do we stand with the rescue tax? Have we given it away? Have we given it up? If we're gonna put it, if we're gonna get it started by one July, time is of the essence then. My understanding that the rescue squad came before the Budget Committee and said that they didn't want the rescue tax. I believe that would be an unwise decision, especially in that if times get hard and the county has obligations that it has to meet, may not be in the budget. This way, we've got it codified, there will always be an access to funds through them that way, so I think we need to reconsider the rescue tax. One thing that has surprised me, I have received calls from as far away as Alabama about some of the things that have been going on around Allegheny County. And what surprises me is the lack of knowledge of civics. Apparently, people do not realize that the town and the county are two separate governmental entities that stand alone. We don't get into their business other than, I think about the only thing that applies is the county manager and one member of this board will sit on the Virginia Carolina Water Authority, and we sit there on our hands because it doesn't involve us. But they need us whenever they want to borrow money, so we sit on the Virginia Carol, Carolina Water Authority. But other than that, we don't make decisions for the town, the town does not make decisions for the county. There are items that do involve both entities, and we sit down and we talk about it, but, you know, just because something's going on in one doesn't mean it's going on in the other. Would like to call out Chris Sheffield. Chris was out helping me plant bulbs in the courthouse. I hope they don't dig them up. Whenever you started working on that courthouse, but, you know, I look out here at your Christmas tree and all those rocks on all those bulbs that I put in, and nothing will surprise me. That's a dig. John Miller passed. John Miller was the mayor of Sparta, North Carolina for over thirty years, if I remember correctly. Taught school, I was a student in the sixth grade. He was a principal, he contributed to the town immensely, good citizen. It's sad, but he leaves a legacy, and it's a good legacy. It's one thing about it though, whenever John Miller held a town county meeting, a town meeting, if Carolina or state was playing, you knew you were gonna be out by nineteen hundred hours.
Or short.
The only reason, now, it might have been three minutes before because he was three minutes away from that television, but it was gonna be there, short and sweet. All right, personal note. I have contacted the Board of Elections. They have advised me that with the filling out of a document, I can withdraw my candidacy as of the first of July. With a few things that have gone on recently, and looking forward with a possible loss of a personnel that is critical to this county, if I had my druthers right now, I would withdraw. But I have, for domestic tranquility, promised my wife that I will not make that final decision until the latter part of June. Can't see that I can get that much done in the future, but I will honor, for domestic tranquility, my pledge. That's all that I have. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. There again, going last, everything's just about been said. First of all, about the Rector family, and I think that's great news. Every, every little bit helps, it makes a big difference. Travel, all, all the other incidentals that goes, goes along with it. I'm proud of this county because we are, are a giving county. If you look around at all the different charities that this county supports, and the good people in the county that support those charities. John mentioned John Miller, mayor. Forty-five plus years, he was my sixth grade teacher. He called me up to the front more than one time. I'm not sure that I did not deserve everything. He, he was smarter than me, but he taught me how to play chess, he taught me the love of math, history, he was a good person. I think if you can go out of this world and people say you were a good person, you worked for the county, you worked for the people of the county, you didn't work for an individual vendetta that you're out to try to destroy somebody. He was a positive influence on so many young people. I don't know how many hundreds and hundreds of students he graduated, or he helped teach, and then he became a principal, mayor, for so long in this county. I was proud to call him a friend. The Budget Committee, I think Michael mentioned that, John, we've, we've been at it every Tuesday and Thursday the last, I don't know, five or six weeks or more, and we probably got that much more to go. It's a, it's a challenge like it has been always. There's, some people are not gonna be happy, some people are gonna be happy. We just don't have the amount of money that every organization's asking for without a staggering, staggering increase in the property tax. And I, I personally am not in favor of any tax increases. Taking us a while to get where we are, and I'm, I'm tickled to death with the finances of this county at this point. That ends my comments. And now we move to requests for closed session pursuant to GS 143-318-1111A through three to consult with our attorney. I need a motion in a second, and we will move to the Budget Room, or we're gonna stay here?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? With that being said, we'll stay.